Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, July the 19th, 2022. We welcome you here with us this evening. Honored that you're here. We have some special things going on tonight. Before we get started with that, I will do our roll call as we normally do, and I will start with our council. And I'll start with Mr. Greer to my right. And if you will, we'll come around and everyone who's here, and then we'll do anyone who's on the.
Kent Greer, thank you.
Ralph Prestwood.
Chrissy Thomas.
Joe Gibbons.
David Stevens.
Ike Perkins.
Jonathan Beal.
Attorney TJ Rohr.
Thank you, sir.
City Manager Scott Hildebrand.
Mr. Hildebrand. City Clerk Shirley Cannon, thank you. And in the back, we have Chief Brent Phelps, Police Chief, and Ken Hare, our Fire Chief, back there, and Matthew Anthony with the Main Street Department is also here, Matthew. Let's see, in the audience, we have Radford, Radford Thomas, our Director of Public Services now on that. Ed Evans, our Interim Public Works Director is with us, and we'll be meeting Mr. Hogan in a few minutes. I'll wait till we do that in a second on that. I think that is all of our staff that's with us in the room. Now, we'll go to Zoom really quick to see who's on with us. Donna Bean, our Finance Director.
Here.
Thank you. Katelyn Horn, Economic Development Director. I know Katelyn is under the weather, so. And Kenny Storey, our Parks and Recreation Director. Kenny is also out of town. Jenny Wheelock, Planning Director. Okay. And I think that's everyone. We welcome the News Talk, of course. Katie is with us from the Lenore News Talk. Thank you for being here, and others we will be meeting in just a little bit on that. So is there anyone that didn't call? Okay, thank you. I believe that covers that. Before we go to our time of moment of silence in our Pledge of Allegiance, which we'll have in a few minutes, I would like to say thank you for this special weekend we just finished here. Very special thank you to all of our staff. Matthew back there and Katelyn, our Main Street Department, our police and fire and chiefs, thank you for all that your staffs did in taking care of us as the Blackberry Festival this past weekend, Public Works, Public Utilities, Recreation. Jonathan, you were also with us. Thank you for being there. I know one of your first official duties, and we appreciate that. But thanks to everyone. Brian Moore and the Chamber of Commerce and his fine staff, Sarah Wirt, who was also one of his leaders in that, and all of the volunteers that were involved in being a part of the Blackberry Festival. We were glad to have it back. The 19th Blackberry Festival was back in, the North Carolina Blackberry Festival, by the way, back in downtown Lenore in Caldwell County, and we were very honored after two years to have it back. We're going to estimate 20-some thousand people were here for Friday and Saturday. We're not sure exactly till we get some, we'll run some drone footage or whatever they do to figure that kind of thing out and see what we had, but it was a great crowd both Friday night and Saturday. So we thank everyone who was part of that council. Thank you all for being there as well. Jonathan did a good job in the parade that you did and leading us down the street with that, so it was, it was good. So thank you, everyone, for a great weekend with the Blackberry Festival. All right, if you will now, please join us as we rise for our moment of silence, and Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our First Order of Business, the United, very special. Well, I'll tell you what, let's do, let's introduce our new department. Come up here, if you will. Let's do that before, as we get started, if you will. We welcome Radford Thomas, our Director of Public Services.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here this evening. It's my pleasure to introduce to you one of our newest staff members in our leadership team with Public Works and Public Utilities, as we've kind of reorganized some things to hopefully provide better service, improve service, more efficient service. But I'm real happy to have John Hogan with us, Jonathan Hogan. 24 years of experience working in local government and has come to us from the city of Hickory, and we're not, we'll make sure we don't let them get him back. He's hit the ground running last week, and I'm really looking forward to our other member of our new team coming in in August, and I think we've got a lot of really good things ahead of us. Has experience with cemeteries and streets. He's ridden on the garbage truck back in the day, and he's come up through the ranks in local government and just understands how we function and the level of service that we need to provide to our citizens. So I'd like to welcome John to our team. Hopefully we'll see him around.
Say something if you like. Thank you, Jonathan. Go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity. I'm man of a few words, but I appreciate the opportunity. It's been a great week. I've had some really awesome folks that I've worked with. They've helped me out and been awesome. So I appreciate the opportunity, and I look forward to serving the citizens of Lenore.
Thank you, Jonathan. We're glad to have you aboard. Thank you. I know we got you broken in pretty hard for the weekend at the Blackberry, and you were right in the middle of it, so we appreciate that, and thank you for having the staff there and the job that they, that they did for us over the week. So, thank you. Okay, now we'll have a special recognition tonight for a place that many of us have known, known for many, many years. And tonight, we're going to celebrate the 100th anniversary of a place that I got my first haircut in. Two years ago? No. A number of years ago, that the Central Barber Shop has been a, you know, Mayberry's got Floyd's, and Lenore, we've got the Central Barber Shop, and that's, that's the place that we get to go and enjoy and talk and, and not only get your hair cut, but learn about all kinds of things. It's been downtown Lenore for all these years. I remember back when it was on West Avenue, and you guys do as well, and it faced west and had the big picture windows, and we could sit there in a chair, get your haircut, watch the traffic and people coming in and enjoy that, and then, of course, it moved to where it is now, there on, on Main Street. It's probably been several different locations, and we'll talk about that in a minute here, but Terry Hall and his son Alan bought the barber shop some years ago, and I'll probably read that in a few minutes, but, and it's been just a wonderful place. I was going to say, I got my haircut first by DC Barnes. He was my next door neighbor of the family. He was like my godfather growing up, but he gave me my first haircut, sitting on one of those boards in the chair and in the barber shop, and I don't remember that exactly, but I know that that's what they told me anyway, that we were there. But he and Phil Atkins and Mr. Knowles, A.J. Knowles, were all in the barber shop, and gosh, there's been so many, many more. But what a, what a great place and what a, just all the memories that we have there we've, we certainly enjoyed. So I'm going to ask Alan, do you want to come up? Dad, you're welcome, if you will, Phil, too. You can, you want to stay, okay, you're fine on that, but I'd like to first present you this, this proclamation, this resolution to say how much we've appreciated that you have been here in our community for so many, you haven't been here 100 years, but anyway, you represent what has been, and we're really excited about that. But I'm going to read this. "Central Barber Shop celebrates 100 years of business, whereas the Central Barber Shop opened in downtown Lenore on May the 11th, 1922, in a room in the Miller Building next to the Caldwell County Courthouse. And whereas Central Barber Shop later moved from the Miller Building to 138 Main Street, which sits at the corner of West Avenue and Mulberry Street. And whereas Terry Hall started working as a barber in Lenore in 1961 and bought the Central Barber Shop 10 years later in 1971. And whereas in 1976, Terry Hall bought the building located on the northwest corner of the square in downtown Lenore and moved Central Barber Shop to its current location at 211 Main Street, where it has operated for the past 46 years. And whereas Terry Hall's son Alan started working as a barber at the Central Barber Shop in 1995, and Terry retired from Central Barber Shop in 2009. And whereas Alan has worked at the Central Barber Shop for the past 27 years, along with fellow barbers Mark Gentry for 18 years and Chris Whitaker for 14 years. And whereas Barber Shops have traditionally been a place where men can socialize, take a break from their daily routine, meet like-minded people, and build friendships with other men in the community. And whereas the Central Barber Shop has served the Lenore community for 100 years. Now therefore, being resolved that I, as Mayor of the city and on behalf of the Lenore City Council, congratulate Central Barber Shop on its centennial celebration and thank Terry Hall and Alan Hall for building their business in Lenore, investing their time and talents in our community, and giving our residents friendship, camaraderie, and excellent haircuts." I guess that's, is that the baby? For 100 years. This the 19th day of July, 2022. Thank you, sir. And then we're going to bring you guys up and do a picture with the council, too. And I got one other thing we'd like for you to have and display in the shop, and this is our city flag that we are presenting to you, the City of Lenore flag, this presented to Central Barber Shop in recognition of their centennial anniversary from 1922 through 2022 by the Lenore City Council. We hope you will hang that with pride, and when people walk in, they'll know this is a special place to be.
That's awesome. That's nice.
How about if we get a picture with all the council? That'd be good. And Mark and Chris, if you want, Mr. Terry, get your dad up. Let's do it. We'll do it right up here in front.
As long as they.
Come down here, let's just do it.
And then I've got a camera back here.
Anything you'd like to point and please do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Kent said he needed a haircut a little bit. Can you get him in?
After hours, price a little bit more. I would, we'd like to thank the council for this recognition. That's a very nice thing to do. I know the City of Lenore's seen a lot of businesses come and go, and then there's those businesses that just won't go away, and that's, and that's our business. And we appreciate being uptown Lenore. I want to thank also the mayor's brother, Mike Gibbons. He was kind of instrumental in giving us a lot of information. He has a lot of records of the transactions and things that happened, because we honestly didn't know how old we were for a long time. We've got a price list at the barber shop from 1926, so we knew we were a little older than that, and four barber shops signed that list agreeing on prices for services. So there was a little price collusion going on back in the day, but that doesn't go on now, I assure you. But I would like to recognize some folks, because there's a lot of folks that were involved in this. I'm glad the mayor mentioned some of those folks, Mr. Barnes, Knowles, Atkins, and, you know, I heard those names, but I didn't really know who they were. And I'll just start with, with my dad. You know, he was, he started in Lenore cutting hair for Mr. Earl Fox in the basement that's across from the city hall, where the bakery's at now, and he cut hair there for 10 years before coming to Central Barber Shop. I barely remember. I was just being remembered, being scared going down those steps as a kid. But, you know, but he bought Central Barber Shop, and of course, you know, had enjoyed growing up over there. Also, in the back, Mary, will you raise your hand? That's Mary Sudworth. That's the widow of the late Bill Sudworth.
Oh, yeah.
And that's her daughter Jill on the left and her granddaughter Callie on the right there. But Bill also cut hair in Lenore for approximately 50 years. He actually started cutting hair in Avon Barber Shop uptown Lenore, and I always remember Bill telling me, he started the winter, they had the snows every Wednesday, because he said, "I thought I was going to starve to death. Nobody could get to the barber shop." It was a tough time. And I also remember Bill got his start in a barber shop, Shining Shoes, at a barber shop in Hudson. So Bill worked at Avon Barber Shop and then joined Central Barber Shop with my dad in the 70s. So Bill was very instrumental in the barber shop continuing, and I have to credit Dad and Bill. Back in the 60s and 70s, when the long hair craze come in, that took out a lot of barber shops. But Dad and Bill kind of got retrained and learned how to do some of those hairstyles and stuff like that, and that kind of kept that going. Also had some other barbers, Larry McNeil, barbered for several years, Claude Spake, then my cousin Barbara. If you remember Barbara, remember a girl working in the barber shop. It was my cousin. She worked for Central Barber Shop for 16 years. So she was instrumental in it. And then, like you said, we got Mark. Mark grew up getting his hair cut at Central Barber Shop, and then later on, as he was an adult, my dad talked to him about going to barber school. So that's how Mark ended up with us. And we got Chris 14 years ago, just out of barber school, and Chris actually met his wife at barber school, and they started shop in Wilkes County, but it's a kind of rural area, so she's working that shop by herself, but Chris is working with us, and Chris's daughter has just started going to barber school. So we're seeing a little continuation on that. But I do appreciate this recognition, you know, for this, and I think the city attorney informed me that after 100 years, the barber, a business that's been in business for 100 years, after that are exempt from property taxes, so we look forward to that.
I deny that.
We've been looking for a new attorney.
We'll let him take over what it costs. That's right.
Do y'all have any comments, anybody? Again, just thank you for this. You know, we appreciate being part of the fabric of Lenore and have enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Definitely a great place, and we enjoy having Central Barbers out there. I always enjoy going in to talk to you guys and catch up on all the news around town that, that I may not hear, but I get to hear it there. So it's, it's always fun to do that. So thank you. Thank you for your business in our community and for being such a great part of it, and we look forward to another 100 years. You know, there's a lot of things going on this year that are 100. Lenore High School is turning 100 this year. The American Legion is turning 100. We're going to celebrate with them in a few weeks, so with that, so we got a lot of, a lot of great things that are happening, but you guys are now officially an institution in this. And if you're looking for any of the original barber chairs, Mr. Rohr's a partner, Hugh Wilson has the chairs that came out of the Central Barber Shop in his basement at his house. We've tried to buy them, but we can't get him to let them go, so anyway.
I understand Hugh drove you from the, your prior location. Isn't that true? Hugh Wilson drove you from your prior location?
Because that became his personal office. That's right. He turned that into his office, but, but we're glad you're where you are, and thank you again for, for being with us. It's always an honor, so we appreciate that very much. You're welcome to stay with us, but if you have other things to do, you're welcome to do that. Thank you, guys.
I'm shocked that they don't want to stay in here the rest of this.
Oh, are you?
Not really.
You guys can't leave. Okay, we'll move on then. Thanks again. We'll move on to our matter schedule for public hearing this evening. Tonight, our first item is a rezoning item. This is 1231 Hybryton Drive Southeast and 1304 Hybryton Drive Southeast. We'll hear this to consider approval of a proposed rezoning for property located at 1231 and 1304 Hybryton Drive to be rezoned from B1 neighborhood business to B2 general business to allow for auto sales. This is intensive retailing, as requested by Mr. Ben Griffin, New Vision Trust Company. Planning Board recommends approval consistent with the consistency statement as follows. All decisions of the Planning Board and the City Council should be based on consistency of the proposal with a comprehensive plan and any other officially adopted plan that is applicable. The comprehensive plan's future land use map identifies this parcel as existing commercial and does not identify any other future land use for the property. The proposed zoning change is consistent with the comprehensive plan's policy concepts to coordinate land use policies with transportation and to anticipate and plan for growth associated with roadway improvements. Staff finds the proposed rezoning to be consistent with the goals and the policy concepts of the comprehensive plan. Okay, I will now open the public hearing. Our planning director, Ms. Jenny Wheelock, is with us. Jenny, anything you want to bring up to us as we open the public hearing?
We've got the staff report in your packets, and this is largely being driven by the owner's desire to put a car lot on this. It's kind of funny, that's usually the example use I use of when we do rezonings to B2, you know, it could be a used car lot, but this one really could be a used car lot. This is, the neighborhood business zoning is weird. It mostly applies to places like, like Miller Hill Grocery or Felder's, you know, places in the middle of neighborhoods. This site is on the edge of this neighborhood. It's not really integrated in, but it's always been residential around. With the new interchange and the rezoning of the Whiznet tracks that we did several years back, we're starting to see commercial or the possibility for commercial on both sides of the street. So staff's recommending approval of this. This is probably an interim type of use. It's already a, a commercial use under B1. This will just expand some of those options, and it would apply the, the design standards like you see up and down through 21 to new development here. We think that this would be kind of the farthest edge of a Whittnall commercial district, because now you can get across there. Before, it was completely isolated from the commercial, so it made more sense, I think, as B1. The applicant is in the audience, I think, if you've got questions for him, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all had about this request. There's no development proposed as a part of it.
Okay. Thank you, council. Any questions of Jenny while she's up here? Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll open it up to anyone who would like to, to address the council with this time. We are in the public hearing. If you, when you come up, please, if you will come to the podium and give us your name and address for our records, please.
Excuse me while I get the cell phone document loaded back up. I'm Kathleen Braswell. My husband and I live at 1519 Star Cross Road. We're directly behind the proposed, the property. And I'm glad that you're here, Ms. Wheelock. We have two questions. It states in here with a staff analysis that the mature buffering surrounds the residential land. The current tree property that's on there, the buffering, is on the applicant's property. So once he sells it, because now that he's opened it up to a B2, it's more highly desirable. So if another owner comes in and tears down those trees, what happens to the buffering that separates our residential property from the commercial property?
Okay.
I can address that now or I can wait? You said you had two things.
I have one, one more.
Okay.
And we were at the planning meeting, the first one we had, and at that point, some of the permitted uses that came up were adult business, adult gaming, and you had mentioned that was not allowed. But in the document, it says that those are permissible items that can be used on that property. We don't want adult business, adult gaming, indoor shooting range in a residential section. It's with that Whittnall interchange, the traffic, the amount of traffic has increased exponentially, and, and if we add anything adult within the neighborhood, we have a lot of children there, I don't see how that can be permitted. Those are the two things that I had.
Okay, thank you. Jenny, go ahead, please.
So with regards to the buffer, the buffers are required to be on the same property as the generating intense land use. So if that buffer was impacted at all, even if there was no development happening, it would be code violation, and then we would require that it be reinstalled.
So if tree lines?
Continuous buffer, yep. Yep. Evergreen, 15 feet wide, continuous, yep. As far as the adult uses, yes, I mean, we, there's a long list of uses allowed in B2. The adult gaming sweepstakes type of uses is one thing that's listed in B2. That was a zoning thing we did, and Chief can speak on it if he wants to, but I don't believe those are allowed at all anymore, but they also are in our code with separation distances. They have to be, I don't remember what distance away from residential, but this is not a property that would qualify. So just because it's on that list of permitted uses, some of them have additional criteria that have to be met. And when we did that analysis, I can just tell you that this, this property definitely was, was not on there. With your residential zoning, it pretty much cuts it out. There are very few sites in the city by design that that would be allowed, should it become legal at some point in the future. So it was on there, but probably shouldn't have been, because I think it's misleading. You'll find it in the code, but it, it could not be, couldn't be here. Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else that you, okay, thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council while we're in the public hearing? Mr. Griffin, come on up, you will.
I need to come up there.
Yes, sir, if you don't mind. As you remember your days, we are on TV.
My name's Ben Griffin. I sold the land where the car lot was in Hudson to McDonald's, and so obviously have to move. And so this property I already owned, and so that's the reason we're here tonight, you know, is to try to take advantage of that. I'll be glad to answer any questions for anyone.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Griffin?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else that would like to address the council while we're in public hearing? If not, I will close the pub. Go, I'm sorry.
My name is Crystal. Why y'all?
Crystal, would you mind coming up?
I like to talk to the money. Okay, okay. This is my voice, guys. All right. My name is Crystal Moore. I'm here to, to address the community about our parks. Our parks play a vital role in our mental and physical health.
Come a little closer.
Come a little closer.
Come a little closer.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Is that Mike line?
Is that Mike home? I'm sure it is.
My voice still small. It's still small.
Crystal, I think you want to talk to us about the park situation?
Um, it just not.
Right now, we're in the public hearing about this particular rezoning.
Okay.
If we can, we'd like, let's do this, and then we can get to that.
But I do want to address this. I was talking about the trees of buffering. Okay, it's a historical park in our community. The trees help reduce air pollution for our schools, Davenport Elementary School. So if we take our trees away in that area, our children suffer because they're long to still developing. So we do need our trees. We do need our trees.
Keep the trees. Yeah, we keep them.
Yeah, they are.
But as far as this community, I would like to see, I would like to see color towards the trees to prevent sun damage and everything else, so we could talk later, more about it later if we can.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
But I do want to address this. You was talking about the trees of buffering. Okay, it's a historical park in our community. The trees help reduce air pollution for our schools, Davenport Elementary School. So if we take our trees away in that area, our children suffer because their lungs are still developing. So we do need our trees. We do need our trees.
Keep the trees. Yeah, we keep them.
Yeah, they are.
But as far as this community, I would like to see, I would like to see color towards the trees to prevent sun damage and everything else. So we could talk later, more about it later if we can. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to address us? If not, we'll close the public hearing and then turn it over for counsel for any discussion, recommendation, and motion.
I have to make a motion that the rezoning be approved as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Thomas that we approve the rezoning for 1231 Hybryton Drive and 1304 Hybryton Drive as presented. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you all for being with us. Okay, we'll move on then to our consent agenda items, which tonight consist of minutes of the city council budget work session of Thursday, May the 19th, 2022. Item B are minutes of the city council meeting of Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Item C are minutes of the closed session minutes of city council meeting of June 7th. Item D are the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, June 28th. Item E are the minutes of the closed session minutes of the committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, June 28th. And item F is a technical assistance agreement with the Western Piedmont Council of Government, approval of the council to enter into an agreement with the Western Piedmont Council of Government in an amount of $30,000, and that's not to exceed, in accordance with the attached proposal to provide grant administration and technical assistance for the EPA Brownfield Assessment Program. So that's your items for consent agenda. I'll open them up for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Motion from the council.
Can you add, we did not have on the agenda the approval of the resolution you just did for the barber shop.
Okay.
So I would add that to that list as well. Otherwise, it's not official in 100 years.
Okay.
Is item G?
Item G will be the resolution that was presented at Central Barber Shop for their 100th year.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve items A through new G as presented.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Stevens for approval of the consent agenda items A through G as presented. Any other comments, discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. We appreciate that. So we'll move now to time for requests and petitions of any citizens. I know that Mrs. Moore was here to talk about our parks and things in the city, and she brought a letter and some recommendations, which I have given to our city clerk, Shirley Cannon. And I'm going to have her make copies and give that all to the council, so you can take a look at it and read about that. And then we will, we will take a look to discuss that and see where we are. But thank you for that. Thank you for your interest in all of the parks around our city. And we certainly do and work pretty hard at taking care of those. Mr. Story, our recreation director, is not here. He's on, traveling. So we could have some other comments about that. But we do a whole lot of things with our parks. But we will address what you have and make sure that we're able to take a look at that. So thank you very much for coming with us tonight. Now, since we're in that, is anyone else here to address the council concerning the, any issue at all with the citizens? Okay? Thank you. Everyone else, I think? All right, we'll move on. We do not have reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendation of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, tonight, a couple items for your information. Summer Music Festival will be held on Friday, July 22nd, and Saturday, July 23rd, at 6:00 PM at the Martin Luther King Center, located on Greenhaven Drive. And I know they have a Facebook post out now. I encourage people to go look at that, see the groups that are performing there. I don't have those in front of me, but it's going to be an exciting time, according to Lester. So I encourage you to go back and look at that. Speaking of MLK, also the 48th Annual Harambe Festival will be held July 30th through August 5th. And every event is free. And we also have a Facebook post for that as well, and some information on the website. So I encourage folks to look at that as well. The committee, the whole will not meet in July. Our next city council meeting will be Tuesday, August 2nd, at 6:00 PM in these chambers. And then lastly, a cruising event will be scheduled for Saturday, August 6th, beginning at 3:00 PM in downtown Lenore. That's all I have for items for information, unless there's any questions on those.
We would encourage you all to, you know, the Harambe events of the week and end of July, through mainly the first week of August, always a lot of fun. It is our oldest festival in the city. So we're honored that it's being able to come back this year after a couple of years that it has not been able to be, to be done. And I know we'll get the event list of other things that happened. They have a senior dinner, and a recognition, Anquid, and several other things. So encourage everyone, if you can, to come out and be a part. It's a lot of fun up there.
Tonight, we have two items for your consideration. The first is a request to approve qualifications for architectural services. We went back and sent a RFQ out to, I think, seven firms to go back and see about redevelopment of three sites in town. One of those is the Bernhardt Segal Industrial Complex. That's located at 1136 Harper Avenue, the historic Lenore High School Gymnasium, and also the Lenore High School Auditorium Building at 1114, and also 1116 College Avenue. From those RFQs, we received three responses. All three firms are very qualified. Kay Lynn developed a committee to go back and review those, and her recommendation, and I guess the committee recommendation, was to go back and contract or ask authorization to contract with Mauer Architecture out of Raleigh. Mr. Mauer, who knows, bought some property downtown, been involved with moving Lenore to the second floor, also bought a property, revitalized that, renovated that, has also worked for other folks downtown. He's also worked with local architect Jesse Plaster, and he recommends him as well. You have his proposal in your packet. I'll be glad to answer questions. I know Matthew Anthony's here as well. He served on that committee. He can answer questions as well. As you know, we're seeking grant funds for those three structures to go back and get those back into productive reuse. And so having this data and architectural renderings will go back and help us move further along in the process. Mr. Mauer and all of these firms actually walked through all those facilities and are familiar with what we had there. And so we would go back and ask council's approval to authorize a contract with our architecture out of Raleigh.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation from the city manager for a request, this is for architectural services with Mauer Architecture. As you know, this is part of the campus facilities that we're looking into in the overall big picture of this, early phases of what we're trying to do there and get that whole project going. I have a lot already happening down there, and we're looking to make that into a great piece in our downtown community. So this is a great, great piece. But I hope there are any questions from me and the council concerning that. And not, we'll ask for a motion for approval of this request.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Perkins to approve the request for the architectural services with, I think we call this an RFQ, with Mauer Architecture as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Second one?
The next item you have is a bid award for the 2022 through 24 asphalt resurfacing contract. Staff received bids and opened those on Tuesday, July 12th, for our two-year contract, beginning in July 1st, 2022, and ending on June 30th, 2024. Seven folks were notified of this. We had three bids received. A low bid was tri-county paving, and they're the lowest responsive bidder. Their low bid is $109 a ton. As you recall, two years ago, that was $82 a ton. So it's increased dramatically in the last several years, but inflation's hitting us pretty hard. With that, I have Mr. Evans here, and this is one of Mr. Evans' projects. But if you have questions, you can go back and answer those. You have the bid tabs in your packet, the notices, and the other quotes on that.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation from the city manager for the bid award for, this is for FY 2023 through 2024, but this is for asphalt resurfacing contract. This would be with Tri-County Paving Incorporated, and it's a bid of $109 per ton for the asphalt thing. Is there any questions anyone would like to ask Mr. Evans or Mr. Hildebrand or whomever concerning that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, for the approval of this bid award.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the asphalt contract as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Greer to approve the bid award for the asphalt resurfacing contract for the term as listed on there. No other discussion? We'll ask for the call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. That stands approved. Anything else?
Just to echo your comments earlier, I just want to thank staff for all the work with the Blackberry Festival. It takes a team to do that, and we had a team out there and did a great job. I just want to thank them publicly for what they did. And council as well.
I came through town an hour or so after we almost finished. Town looked great. It was clean, and we appreciate that very much. Thank you, guys, for that. You couldn't even tell we really had a festival, other than a few pieces standing around that you knew they were there for the festival. But other than that, it was, it looked really great. So thank you for the, for the hard work on that and for keeping our town looking so great.
And also thank Mr. Perkins for his, he did a great job with Invocation, and he got complimented on that. And I think the guy would take you on the road with him for what he said.
That's what the guy told me. Are you for hire?
He wanted to hire his services. Preacher, he had a half-gun, will-travel preacher services.
Are you for hire?
Yeah, again, thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you for your prayers. We appreciate that. And all of you guys for being a part of that. It was a great festival, and we look forward to many more. Because next year will be number 20, so we're excited about that. So that'll be, that'll be good. All right, I'll give any report from our city attorney, Mr. Rohr.
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for taking care of the taxes for the barber shop.
I'd rather owe it to you than cheat you out of it.
Yeah. The only report I have, I will say, tonight is my 47th wedding anniversary. And I, you should congratulate my wife, really. My wife having to put up with me for 47 years is quite an honor. But July 19th, 1975, we went to First Baptist Church.
I was in the past, I had.
Were you? I thought I remembered you around there.
I was four years old.
Only well, Ralph could have been there, and I.
I wasn't born.
It's not good for a preacher to lie.
I'm telling you. It's like double life.
That's the truth. That's the truth. But other than that, I don't have any other things to bring up before us tonight. So I'm turning it over and looking at any council members, any reports from any of our council members.
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And we've discussed this several times, that the low pressure water in the Friedman Penley Avenue area. I know that we've discussed the finance of that. However, with the changing of guard with our new water department, I hope that council does not leave that as unfinished business. There are a lot of people that have contacted me and complained about the low water pressure. And Chief, the water hydrant and to extinguish a fire would be affected by that as well. So I would like for us to, if not, to revisit that and maybe put something towards working on that and getting that fixed. It's been almost two years now that we haven't had good water pressure in that area. So I would like, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hildebrand and Bradford, that you guys would not just leave that, and we could maybe look at that again and make sure that we are addressing that.
I think, Mr. Hildebrand, aren't we looking into something? Mr. Thomas, yes, sir?
If I could just very quickly, that's one of our priority projects. It hadn't been forgotten. We've just got to find the right way to pay for it.
Okay. And that has been discussed about how we're bringing, looking at some funds. Mr. Hildebrand and I, and Mr. Thomas have had that conversation about what we're going to do there. So it's, it's at the forefront. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other council member have anything to bring before us? All right, if nothing else, we stand adjourned.